Oh, here we go. It's not the bishop though. Oh, okay. But, yes, sir.
Oh God, our eternal father. We bow our heads before thee at the commencement of these council proceedings and give thee thanks for thy blessings upon us and upon this land. We pray that thou wilt hear the words spoken this night and be aware of the desires of the hearts of the people here. We are grateful for thy blessing in providing us with good weather and health and strength. We give thee thanks for thy son, Jesus Christ, and we pray that thou wilt bless the people of this land with a desire to obey the laws of the land and to keep his commandments, that we may live after a manner of peace and kindness and forgiveness and understanding. We're grateful for the service of these council members and pray that thou bless each in their personal lives and their families. We pray that thou will bless them with wisdom and understanding the complexities of the choices placed before them and give thee thanks for that wisdom that thou does provide in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, sir, and I apologize for not recognizing you. Let me please remind you that if you have a cellphone or other device that goes off, to please silence it so that it doesn't go off during the meeting and also to treat the speakers who are speaking with the same respect that you would want them to show you. So that means if you agree with them, that's fine. If you disagree with them, that's fine, but keep those emotions to yourself. Thank you very much. To my left is council member David Albritton.
Good evening.
Council member Hoyt Hamilton.
Good evening.
Our city attorney Pam Aiken.
Good evening.
And our city clerk Rose Marie Call.
Good evening.
To my right, council member Jay Poglaze.
Good evening.
Council member Bob Kondof.
Hello, folks.
Our city manager Bill Horn.
Good evening.
And our assistant city manager, Michael Delk.
Good evening.
Our first order of business isn't on the agenda. Council skip Rogers, who's with the Turkey Trot and has been organizing that and running that for many years, wasn't able to come by, but he came by the office and he left us each with a mug promoting the Turkey Trot, a medal pretending like we have finished, you know, the race, that we survived the Turkey Trot, and asked that we remind everybody that registration is open for the Turkey Trot that is held on Thanksgiving Day at Clearwater High School. It's a great way to start the celebrations for Thanksgiving, and this will be the 41st year of the Turkey Trot. Next is to recognize our two service awards. Our first honoree is Jared Hood from the fire department, who's been with the city of Clearwater for 10 years. Also from the fire department, for 20 years of service to the city and its residents, Andrew Hawkins.
Division chief of training, Andrew Hawkins, started in the fire service as an active member and advisor in the Fire Explorer Program for 10 years. He was an intern for three years in the department and was hired October 4th, 2019 as a career firefighter. He then served as a driver operator in 2005 and promoted to first lieutenant in 2009. His leadership skills, attention to safety, and fire service experience made him a good fit for his latest promotion, which was in May 2016, to the fire division chief. Chief Hawkins manages a multifaceted training division and supervises three lieutenants and a fire training officer. His team is responsible for an eight-week hands-on fire school for every recruit class before they are assigned to a permanent shift as a firefighter-perimedic. Chief Hawkins and his team conduct monitor and remediate monthly suppression and rescue evolutions, administer quarterly officer training, and host several special team drills, which include numerous surrounding fire agencies. The multifaceted training compound consists of a three-story live fire tower, a state-of-the-art three-classroom educational facility, the new EOC, and an administrative center. Needless to say, he's very busy. Chief Hawkins has obtained fire service certifications to be a blue card command instructor, live fire instructor, incident safety officer, as well as multiple leadership, safety, and command certificates. Additionally, he has obtained his bachelor of science degree in fire administration and is working on obtaining his chief training officer credentials from the International Center for Public Safety Excellence. Within his 20 years of service, division chief Hawkins received the firefighter of the year award and valor award for bravery. Andrew celebrated his 17th wedding anniversary with his lovely wife Amanda this year. They enjoy one 12-year-old son, Ethan. The city of Clearwater congratulates and thanks division chief Hawkins on his 20 years of dedicated service to the fire department, the city of Clearwater, and its citizens.
And our September employee of the month is Shane Miller from the marine and aviation department.
Shane Miller was working overnight recently at the downtown Harbor Marina, providing security services. Early in his shift, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office put out a BOLO, be on the lookout, for an elder gentleman, Mr. Hughes, who has dementia and is missing possibly in the downtown Clearwater area over the radio. A few hours after the BOLO was announced, Shane left the marina to go get something for his lunch. As he was exiting the area, he noticed a vehicle that matched the description of the missing gentleman, Mr. Hughes. Shane made contact with police and confirmed the identity of the missing individual. Police and fire personnel were notified and arrived on scene. Mr. Hughes was safely transported for precautionary reasons to the hospital and reunited with his wife. Shane's performance that night demonstrates an employee staying vigilant, paying attention to detail, and performing at a high level. Thank you, Shane, for making sure all of our citizens are safe.
Oh, so BOLO was a tie. Nicole Ford, Michelle Edwards, from the Clearwater Neighborhood Family Center for Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic stages, and whereas residents should be encouraged to support drug prevention educational programs and to remain committed to a drug-free community, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to affirm their commitment not to use illegal drugs and not to use drugs illegally, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, singers, citizens, service organizations, and youth can demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now therefore, I, George Ann Kretikas, mayor of the city of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 23 to 31 to be Red Ribbon Week in Clearwater. Take it. from RCS and Melinda Perry from RCS to come forward. And we're not seeing Kirk here. Okay, so we have just Melinda. Great. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain power and control over the other, and whereas the problems of domestic abuse are not confined to any one group of people, but impact people of any economic status, age, race, and ethnicity, or sexual orientation, and are wide-ranging throughout society, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas RCS Pinellas has provided support, safety, and advocacy to domestic violence survivors and their children throughout Pinellas County for more than 50 years, now therefore, I, George Kretikas, mayor of the city of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2019 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clearwater, and urge residents to support any activity or program aimed toward the elimination of domestic violence Council, we have Beth Gaelic, Cliff Puslik, and Megan Myers from the Bay Area Manufacturing Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the nation and Florida's economy, and whereas manufacturing provides jobs to approximately 30,000 Pinellas County citizens, and almost 1,300 manufacturing facilities in Pinellas County make products as diverse as high-tech turbines to gourmet flavorings, and whereas the Bay Area Manufacturers Association, the Florida Advanced Technological Education Center of Excellence, St. Petersburg College, and Pinellas Technical College support manufacturing and manufacturing careers, and whereas the Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Pinellas County Schools, and others coordinate programs to strengthen technical and academic skills of young adults enrolled in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study. Now therefore, I, George Ann Kretikas, mayor of the city of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2019 to be Manufacturing Month in Clearwater, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve in our city, county, state, and nation. Counsel of Florida, the League of Cities and the League of Mayor is promoting Florida City Government Week, and to receive that proclamation, I'm going to ask our Nicole Sprague to please come forward from our office of records and legislation, and we're going to read the proclamation.
We're doing this.
Come here.
We're doing this.
Is that your good side? Whereas municipal government and its elected officials is the government closest to the constituents and has the most direct daily impact on its residents, and whereas city government officials and employees have the responsibility of providing exemplary public service and of displaying the importance of volunteering in their community, and whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities work together to teach students and all citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects, volunteer opportunities, and informational meetings, and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Florida that they can help shape local decision-making and positively impact their hometown through civic involvement. Now therefore, I, George Ann Kretikas, mayor of the city of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 21 through 27 to be Florida City Government Week in Clearwater. Thanks, Nicole.
Oh, let's, let's do that.
This is fun. I'm dizzy.
Can we do it all the time? No, okay, dizzy.
Say hello to everybody. So when our public communications staff posts that on Facebook tonight or tomorrow morning, please go on, like it, share it, so that we can be the one city in Florida that has the most likes on the proclamation declaring Florida City Government Week. Counsel, are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of October the 3rd?
Move to per the minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of October the 3rd. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? If so, please make sure that you filled out a card and presented it to the clerk. You would have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you give us your name.
Lean into shade of 522 Cleveland Street. As some of the council may be aware, I've been on record from this very dais stating my belief in the spirit of volunteerism. With that in mind, I ask of the council for a little indulgence, as I recognize a group of people for their contributions to our city. I am on the board or a member of four local volunteer organizations, DCMA, DDB, CDP, and Achievers. These organizations, roughly adding up to 80 members, have donated their time, talent, intellect, as well as their resources for the betterment of their city and its citizens. Therefore, I feel it is imperative to not only encourage these volunteers for their achievements, but encourage future volunteers. Now, I have been present on several council meetings where the question was asked, what has the private sector done for Clearwater? And to my knowledge, these questions have remained unanswered. I would like tonight to have the opportunity to address that question. So this morning, I quickly jotted down from memory some of the accomplishments dating about 18 months to 24, and they are, include, but not unlimited, to over 60 events, which promote our community, networking events, educational events, that focus on women's health issues, domestic violence awareness, community issues, government initiatives. We have entered into partnerships with various charities from HEP, SPCA, to C2000. We've partnered with other entities such as BACA, Chamber of Commerce, Threshers, and Capitol Theater. We have assisted in city department initiatives, painting of floor murals to clean up and set up of events, promotion and education of city initiatives. We've also sponsored partner events, such as Jazz Holiday, Blast Friday, boat races, and Santas. We've also engaged in positive storytelling through various ad campaigns via print, billboards, radio, as well as over 12 TV appearances. We've engaged actively in social media, Facebook pages, Instagram pages, websites, and social media programming, and daily campaigns. Our members have brought a lot to Clearwater. Just recently, over 70 new companies, a unicorn company, a Dali museum pop-up exhibit that has recently been recognized as best non-museum show, numerous other community awards, sponsorships, financial contributions, innovation, sustainability, educational opportunities, world-renowned artists, leaders, professionals, and thousands of employees. My hope tonight is that we can put this issue to rest, and not only acknowledge those who have contributed, but to encourage future community involvement. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? If not, I will close public comment and move to the consent agenda, item 7.1 through 7.12. Anybody from the public or the council wishing to pull an item off the consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.12?
I apologize for not being here at the work session Monday. I had a physical limitation that prohibited it, but I did watch it on TV as it was being broadcast, and I had all the information in front of me as we always do, and so I would like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.12. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 8.1, Mr. Horn.
Declare surplus for the purpose of donation for development of affordable housing, real property located at 1304 North Madison Avenue, together with vacated right-of-way, per city ordinance 9327-19, approve the real property donation agreement between the city and Habitat for Humanity of Pinellas County, Inc., and allow the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Lane.
Thank you. Chuck Lane, Assistant Director, Economic Development and Housing Department. There's lots in North Greenwood. We took title to it at no cost through foreclosure of a code lane. It lies in the southeast corner of Tangerine Street and North Madison Avenue. It's suitable for a single-family home site. Habitat for Humanity plans to build a six-bedroom home on the site. They have a large family with several children, many of whom have special needs. I'll take questions, please.
Any questions of staff on agenda item 8.1? Anybody from the public wishing to speak to agenda item 8.1?
Motion approved, agenda item 8.1.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 8.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 8.1.
There is no ordinance.
There's no ordinance.
8.1, there's no ordinance.
It's per city ordinance.
Ah. Okay. 8.2.
Deny amendments to the Clearwater Community Development Code to expand the geographical area within the regional center sub-district of the US-19 district, where self-storage warehouses are allowed, are currently allowed, on a limited number of parcels, to allow the use on certain parcels, 1.1 to 1.2 acres in area with frontage on Seville Boulevard, and do not pass ordinance number 9308-19 on first reading. Ms. Matsky.
Good evening, Lauren Matsky, planning and development. This is an amendment to the Community Development Code generated by a property owner seeking to use the text amendment process to give development rights to a single 1.13 acre property on Seville Boulevard within the regional center sub-district. This text amendment changes the use table in the US-19 zoning district and development standards. The property owner is requesting to amend the code because they have entered into a contract to sell the property to RK Development Partners, who would like to build a 900-unit self-storage warehouse on the site where it is currently not permitted. The regional center sub-district is comprised of over 600 parcels in two major activity centers that are over 900 acres in size. This amendment doesn't even apply to 1/4 of 1% of the land area in the regional center. The subject property is only a tiny portion of the overall regional center, but that does not mean that this amendment is insignificant. Staff understands that the subject site is challenging to develop due to a wall for the adjacent residential property to the east and a significant water line easement along the same side of the property. This is really more of a remnant parcel, but there is still about 1/2 of an acre that can be developed. As Ms. Clayton stated at work session, redevelopment takes time, and properties like this are candidates for consolidation, which can also take time as the US-19 market continues to strengthen. The Community Development Code establishes two criteria for text amendments, and this application does not meet either criterion. The text amendment is inconsistent with and does not further the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and additionally, the text amendment does not further the purposes of the Community Development Code or other city ordinances and actions designed to implement the comprehensive plan, including the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the US-19 Corridor Redevelopment Plan, and Clearwater Green Print. That is the basis for planning and develop, excuse me, Ken. That is the basis for planning and developments recommendation of denial for this application. Staff met with the applicant and their representative prior to any application being submitted. At that time, we explained that a future land use map amendment would be the appropriate application to submit if the goal was to build self-storage on this property. The property abuts the corridor sub-district to the east and to the south, and self-storage is one of the permitted uses in that sub-district. This is the second time an individual property owner has applied to amend the US-19 district with a narrow focus of allowing self-storage on a specially carved-out portion of the regional center. This is the only use in the district or and district in the code that is written in this manner. The property owner is using the text amendment process to try and gain development rights that are not afforded to any other property owners. The end result is like spot zoning, just through a separate process. The appropriate way to gain the rights to have this use is through the future land use map amendment process. However, because the development potential is less in the corridor sub-district, a 1.5 floor area ratio compared to a 2.5 FAR, which may equate to about 300 fewer storage units than proposed, this clearly motivated the applicant to carve out rights that others would not have. Not only does this application give rights to one property owner for a use which others cannot also build on their property in the same sub-district, the regional center, it also gives this property owner significant development rights for this use that others in the corridor sub-district do not have. Approval of this application would result in an unfair advantage for one property owner over all other properties. At work session, staff was asked what else could be built on this site, noting that providing parking limits the size of development. The companion site plan provides 18 surface parking places for almost 118,000 square feet of self-storage and office or retail uses. The developer is utilizing the parking reduction factors which are established in the US-19 district. Those allow up to 25% reduction in parking if alternatives such as electric vehicle charging stations, photovoltaic, top-shade structures, or bus shelters are provided. So to answer the question, it was tricky, it's not clear-cut, but utilizing 18 surface parking spaces, the parcel could potentially support 12,000 square feet of research and development, or 16 residential units, or 48 assisted living beds, or 6,000 square feet of other non-residential uses. And again, that's using the provided surface parking and the parking requirements in the code. The planning and development department is recommending denial of this application today because today because of, or based on the two criteria for text amendments in the code. It is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and many other adopted city plans, and does not further the purposes of the Community Development Code. But additionally, as I've stated, we disagree with the utilization of the text amendment application as a pathway to providing rights to an individual property within the city. The Community Development Board recommended denial by a vote of five to two, acknowledging that this was a difficult parcel to develop, but expressing concern over the applicant's choice to pursue a text amendment instead of a future land use map amendment. And with that, I can answer questions.
Any questions of staff on agenda item eight point two? Mr. Condon.
If you could explain to my slower brain, if the applicant had used the map amendment, how would his development be limited? What could he not build that he's asking for now?
Just a moment, and I can pull up some general parameters. So as, they're proposing approximately one hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of development, that's nine hundred self-storage units, and approximately forty-five hundred square feet of retail and office. I wanted to do this math quickly, so I calculated that out to be approximately one hundred and twenty-six square feet per storage unit. So that's just an average. Obviously, those sizes would vary. Using that as a factor, in the corridor sub-district, which is a one-point-five-floor area ratio, the maximum a project could be is almost seventy-four thousand square feet. So that is about forty-four thousand square feet smaller in size. That could fit, using that same one hundred and twenty-six square feet average for a storage unit, about five hundred and eighty-five storage units. So that would be a little over three hundred fewer storage units in that property.
And about, if I could just follow, and about how many stories would it take for that size plot?
Well, so as it relates to height, that's a little bit less of a concern. The regional center currently allows up to a hundred and fifty feet in height, but the corridor sub-district allows one hundred feet in height. The proposed project is actually less than a hundred feet, so it would meet either sub-district's standards. It's proposed at ninety-six feet or eight stories.
Any other questions? Mr. Alberton.
This is a difficult site, but in your best estimate, do you think if the applicant did do a map amendment, that staff would approve it or disapprove it?
That was the question I asked the other day, and they said that, that was what I was asking the other day.
I think that we, first of all, we haven't done the detailed analysis, but when you look at the map, I think there's points that would make it more supportable because it's adjacent to the corridor. So, you know, ultimately, we're not approving it, you would be approving it.
Well, you're denying it. I mean, you're asking us to deny it. So my question was, if they went the other route, I was led to believe during the work session that if, it seemed like you were asking, if they would have done a map amendment instead of a text amendment, that it would have been approved. And I guess my question would be, is that true, or would that still be denied?
I think you can make a case to support it. But again, I want to say for the record, we did not do a full analysis of a land use plan amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think yesterday you said you hadn't seen plans for the smaller version, that's why you weren't willing to commit.
No, I think we had not done an analysis of the code, the criteria for a land use plan amendment.
Okay.
Because that application hasn't been presented to us.
Any other questions, council? No, we're not, we have to, okay, the applicant has an opportunity to speak now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applicant gets five minutes for opening and five minutes for closing. I was wondering if we could consolidate that and reserve the balance of our time so we could get through our points and provide whatever remaining time we have for closing.
If you don't run over your ten minutes, that's...
Yes, sir, I'll do my best, I'll do my best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brian Unck, six-two-five Core Street, here on behalf of the contract purchaser, RK Partners, Reed Hayden and Kevin Menendez. This application in no way inhibits or impairs the implementation of the US-19 plan. In fact, it facilitates the implementation of the goals and objectives on the US-19 plan on this very, very small, very specific site. I'm a little concerned that process is getting in the way of the merits of the case. This is a legal, valid process, available to any citizen or property owner in Clearwater. The US-19 plan is unlike any other long-term plan in Clearwater. There's only US-19 zoning, there are its own specific sub-districts, there are street frontages. Any change to any property in the US-19 plan requires a text amendment as a part of the application. So even if we were to do a comprehensive countywide plan map amendment, we would still have to do a text amendment to this map, which is in your code. So we'd still be here under this process. Keep in mind, the level-three approval process set forth in the CDC is the same for a text amendment and the countywide map amendment. What's the difference? The difference is, the countywide map amendment would require additional hearings and approval by Ford Pinellas and by the Pinellas County Commission. But this text amendment application before you today was evaluated by the Ford Pinellas staff and found to be consistent with the countywide rules. So this application that's properly before you today has already been reviewed by the county and said it's unnecessary for us to review this any further, it's consistent with our rules. So respectfully, I'm going to focus the rest of our time on the merits of the case, and we'll reserve any other discussion in the process for questions that you have. But the other thing I want to point out on that, I lied, sorry, the other thing I want to point out on that is that this is the same process that the staff directed the Denny's applicant to follow. The Denny's applicant was directed, follow the text amendment process. So we're doing the same exact process that was done before. On the Denny's property, it was criticized for affecting too many parcels. This text amendment affects too many parcels. We went back to the CDB twice to narrow it to only two parcels. This applicant, with that in mind, doesn't want to inhibit or impair the other parcels in the US-19 plan that are more appropriately less encumbered. And so that's why we're focusing on one parcel, because that's what we were directed to do the last time. So these arguments are contradictory. The positions from the prior application to this application are contradictory. One of the things I want to focus on is that there are eighteen hundred and fifty-seven new multifamily or single-family units that are within the vicinity of this site. The staff did an excellent job in the staff report, being very balanced and very fair, and I want to tell them I appreciate them for that. Ms. Matsky called me for clarification, she wanted to know what the intentions were, and I really appreciate that. One of the most important things is that Pinellas County Economic Development has done a study that shows that Pinellas County is seventy-seven percent of the national average for supply of storage units, which results in developers looking for creative ways to build self-storage in Pinellas County in the local market is challenging because of high land values and lack of available real estate that can accommodate self-storage. This is a needed use. This is a use that serves the residents and the new residents of Clearwater. Just because you live vertically doesn't make you any less of a neighbor, doesn't make you any less of a citizen of Clearwater, and this is an absolutely needed use in the city. The last thing I wanted to address is assemblage. The staff, one of the reasons the staff led us to believe that they might not necessarily support the plan map amendment is because they want this property to remain in the regional center, as Ms. Clayton stated during the work session, for possible future assemblage. We want it to stay in the regional center, too, but we wanted to point out, we do have that letter from Rob Booz, who owns the 7-Eleven, that that property is under contract with 7-Eleven until 2038. So assemblage could take place in twenty or thirty years if it's still part of the regional center, but it's not going to be anytime soon. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hayden to address additional merits of the case.
Councilmembers, mayor. I wanted to start by talking about some of the site encumbrances that we've addressed before. As you can see, other than the fact it's a small and fairly awkwardly shaped site, you have the large fifty-foot-wide City of St. Pete easement running through it, makes developing this site a real challenge. Beyond that, there are use challenges as well because of its location. So we looked at it for retail uses, we looked at it for office uses. The retail uses didn't work because poor traffic counts on Seville, poor visibility from US-19, and too much competition from all the retail that's surrounding it. Office, you know, other than poor market demand and a glut of supply, it's going to require a parking garage to ever develop it to the potentials envisioned within the US-19 plan. Residentially, again, poor locations, going to require a parking garage for it to ever be developed to the potential. So we know this, we know that a parking garage on this site is not feasible because of the size and the encumbrances. And ultimately, parking will control the build-out of the site. That being said, we want to talk about what we're proposing, and at this time, you know, we're proposing eighteen parking spaces. If we, and as Lauren pointed out, you know, based on those eighteen spaces, we've pretty much, almost filled up the site, but we could probably put ten more spaces there. We could get to about twenty-eight spaces. At the parking requirement for office and retail, that's going to leave us at about seven thousand square feet of potential office retail we could build there. What we're proposing is actually six thousand square feet of office retail. So really, there's only a difference of a thousand square feet of retail and office. And frankly, it's going to be the self-storage component that ensures that that office and retail will be able to survive financially. Other than that, I want to touch on the US-19 district plan. I think what is not being focused on here is that this does accomplish the plan, in our opinion. The plan is about intensities, it's about pedestrian movement. Currently, there's no sidewalk there. We're going to be putting in a sidewalk, that's per the plan. It's about transit access, it's about street skate, building design, site layout, all these things we are designing per the plan, again. And beyond that, this is a mixed-use development, and as Brian pointed out, this is a service to the community around it.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. At this point, we'll reserve the balance of our time and answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions of the applicant? No questions?
I just have one question, sir. What response have you had from the residential neighbors on the east side?
So we haven't had any response from the residential neighbors on the east side. That is an apartment complex, and that is leased out, so their owners, the owner of the apartment complex is, in other words, they're not homesteaded units, they're not units that people are getting notice and those types of things, I think. So my point is that we haven't had any response at all from them. Important thing to remember is, the density is allowed. The two-point-five FAR is allowed. Clearwater malls right across the street, Reed, how much percentage are they at of their allowable density?
They're only about eight percent of their allowable build-out, ultimately. They could build over three million more square feet there.
So the density is a right in the code. So the issue of, as Lauren said, height is not an issue, the density is allowed in the regional center, and that could be a hotel, it could be an office, but the problem, again, as we stated, is you would need to have the commensurate parking, which is why it's failed. So it's been identified by the staff and by the planners as a site for intense development, but because of the encumbrances, that intense development is not going to happen based on the parking. And this shows the distance, it would be about over a hundred and ten feet of distance between the building and the closest residential building there. And they do have a wall that is on our property that we're going to maintain. In other words, we're not taking down the pre-existing wall, even though it's on our site. All these trees will stay, these trees aren't going away, and the work will be over here on the side of the property. And this property owner supports it, as we've said.
Any other questions? How tall is that apartment building that you were referencing?
I don't know.
And this is, that's the three-story building.
And your building is going to be eight stories?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which is still below the hundred foot.
Mr. Unck, you referenced a letter that you had from Ford Pinellas.
Yes, sir.
Did Ford Pinellas take a vote and approve this project?
No, so the Ford Pinellas...
So they didn't, they didn't take a vote, they just sent a letter saying that they were comfortable with it?
They don't need any additional involvement, that's all it says.
But did our Community Development Board take a vote?
They did, yes, sir.
And it was five to two?
It was a five to two recommendation of denial.
And there are attorneys on that board?
There are two attorneys on that board, yes, sir.
Did they vote in the majority or in the minority?
Mrs. Lau voted in the minority.
Did they vote in the majority or in the minority?
I'm sorry, they voted in the majority.
So they voted against approval?
That's right. It might...
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the public to speak to this project? We asked that you have a card filled out? You need to fill out a card and give us your name. You can give us, you can speak and then fill out the card.
My name is John Palosi. I live in Seville condominiums, right behind the project they're going to build. Right behind them is a three-story building. I'm not in that building, I'm further back, so I won't be seeing that. But the people that live in that three-story building to see an eight-story storage, that's going to be a horror. That's going to look terrible. And the one thing that's really bad is the traffic over there. There's only one lane to get out of Seville Boulevard, and you have the mall coming out. The weekends, you can't even get out of Seville to get onto 19 to go south. So adding this is going to be a horror with traffic. And please, we don't need it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please fill out a card, sir, so that we can have your name and address for the record. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? You're up again.
Does the staff have a rebuttal or the comment? I didn't know if they had a closing, or you want us to just go? I don't want to take their time if they're...
I would like to say just a couple of things. Mr. Unck did point out how self-storage is a needed use in Pinellas County, and it's not that we don't agree with that, we believe we just have other locations for it in the corridor where it's already allowed, where it was planned for. Also, just to point out, between the Duncan, the new Duncan self-storage on Duncan, obviously, and then the one that's going to be built on US-19 that was subject of the last text amendment, will have fifteen hundred new self-storage units added to our market. And then we have plenty of land in the corridor to accommodate this use. Also, I think there was a comment about, concern about process. I think process is critical in this instance, because you're affording someone rights that other property owners don't have, and the way to get that is through following the correct procedural path that, you know, one would have. And so that's why process is important to us. It's not that we're anti-self-storage, we just think that this is the wrong way to deal with it. I think that in the end, if city council, I'm almost afraid to say this, but if you are supportive of self-storage in the regional centers, I think it would be best to look at it holistically and make an amendment to allow it so that others can avail themselves to that.
Mr. Unck?
I wanted to address that gentleman's statement about traffic. I think that's actually, one of the nice things about self-storage is it really doesn't generate traffic. The reason why with this use, you're actually able to build to the intensities, again, envisioned within the plan, are because there isn't much of a parking requirement for self-storage, because we don't generate a whole lot of traffic. It's a pretty quiet use, actually, so. And again, it will be designed appropriately for the area. Architecturally, it's going to look like an office building, it's not going to look like a self-storage facility. So, you know, the height of it is not, is less than what's currently, well, is actually a hundred and fifty feet is currently allowable in the activity center. We're going to eighty-six or ninety-six. A hundred would be allowed in corridor. So, you know, these are the heights and the mass, the scale that are already envisioned in this plan, regardless of what's put there. And then I do think process, as Gina said, you know, it is important, but it's important to understand that we would always have to do a text amendment. And the land use amendment that she speaks of, that's a countywide plan amendment. That would be an application that actually takes place after we get the text amendment approved. So in essence, after the text amendment, the city would now be our representative to the county in a countywide plan map amendment. And I got the schedules on that. And the soonest that we could ever go before then, which again, that decision now is taken away from the city, the decision goes to the county as to whether this is allowable within our city. And that wouldn't take place till February, assuming everything went perfectly at this point. Time is a factor here as well, and we do believe that we are taking the path that is the proper path. And we do believe that we are taking the path that is the proper path. And ultimately, if there is redevelopment of this site, and there is an assemblage of this site, many years down the road, this will remain within the Activity Center. Thank you.
And with our last minute, I just wanted to also point out, and we've discussed this, but this property does have a significant history of code enforcement issues. It is not, obviously, a property that the residents probably want to be behind when it's got stuff being dumped on it, when it has beer cans from the 7-Eleven. And this is one of those hard properties to maintain, because there's nothing they can do with it right now, without this text amendment. I want to just remember, remind you again, the density is not before you. This is a properly pursued application. This is a compelling, compelling evidence to support this legislative decision that will maintain the goals and objectives of the US-19 Plan for Intensities, for pedestrian-oriented development. There's no sidewalk on the parcel now. It will have full streetscaping, interconnectivity between the parcels, beautiful landscaping, cause very little traffic, activate that site with 6,000 square feet of retail office, and support the goals and objectives of the US-19 Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, to keep this sort of from getting too muddy, the motion will be to deny the amendments, and then we will work from that, if that's okay? So the agenda item is to deny the amendments, so the motion would be to deny the amendments. Then if you want to approve and allow the project to go forward, you would vote no. Okay? So is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 8.2, which would be to deny the amendments?
So move?
Is there a second?
I will second it for discussion.
Right. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 8.2 to deny the amendments to the Community Development Code. Comments, counsel?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Do that. Yeah, at first, I'd like to compliment staff. You know, y'all, I know how hard y'all have worked on this, and by your rules and by your direction, you've done exactly what you're supposed to do. No question. I appreciate it. I'm going to come back, come at it though, from a personal perspective and realistic perspective of someone who's lived here his whole life. This piece of property has been vacant through two complete iterations of Clearwater Mall. On Clearwater Mall, the first Clearwater Mall opened up, it was a beautiful indoor mall, lots of activity. Nobody showed interest on this one piece of property. There's nothing there. Clearwater Mall died, sat vacant, got torn down. The new Clearwater Mall has emerged, lots of activity. Nothing has still happened on this property. Y'all said, and I agree, consolidation takes time. But I know the Boz family, and I talked to them about this, and they've got 20 years of lease left on that 7-Eleven, and that's the only property that could conceivably consolidate with this property. And they have no desire whatsoever to have this property. There's no use, they have no use for it. So, it's, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But also, as was presented, you've got 1,800 new housing units going up, within half a mile of this site. You've got new apartments on the east side of Clearwater Mall, you've got new ones being built on that Bayou Road in US-19. Seville itself, and most people that live in apartments have more stuff than they can store in their unit. This is something people can use. And this location, if this location was a perfect location for anything else, it would already be there. Given the history of the lot and the location, you know, if a restaurant could be there or something else, it would be there. And the fact that all it is right now is a code enforcement headache for the city of Clearwater because of trash and homeless and everything else, I'm not saying anything's better than nothing, but this is the only thing that has even remotely come forward on this property in 60 years that I'm aware of. So, I will be voting no on the motion, because, again, while I know it's not exactly what staff and what the US-19 Plan desires, given the complexities and unique properties of this property, I'm good with it. So, I will be voting no.
Any other comments, counsel? Mr. Robert?
I'm kind of sitting in the same position on this, because this is another difficult site. And Mr. Hamilton's right, it's been, nothing has been there. And nothing's going to go there for another 20 years, it seems like, from what the adjacent property owner is saying. And so I'd rather see something go there than have it be a problem. Now, I don't know if this is something, I really don't like the part about that we always making text amendments to storage facilities. But the last two that we've done are very, I think, odd sites in this whole corridor. If I knew something else was going to go here, I probably would support, you know, that. But I think that, you know, at least what was presented to me tonight, it seems like the county's on board with it, and I think it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood. So I'm going to be voting to deny it. Or voting no on, denial.
Mr. Bublais?
I think the plan, it's great to have a plan, especially for the US-19, and as relevant as it is, is to our city, for economic growth of that corridor. But to have a plan that's so rigid that doesn't allow for flexibility, and staff has said there is a path forward. It's not necessarily text amendment, but, correct me if I'm wrong, that is something that anyone can avail themselves to, correct? They don't have to necessarily do a map amendment. Anybody that wanted to do a change, such as these folks, could come forward with a text amendment. Because you said you didn't want to set a precedent. There is a process forward, and I'm not sure that the strategy of having them go through a different process to get lesser intensity, which doesn't meet, I think, the needs of that community, or doesn't meet the intensity and density, and it meets all the other aspects of the plan. So I think a plan is good, but I think flexibility, a great plan with flexibility is even better, to be able to address a situation such as we have here. I'm going to tell you why. I have a brother-in-law who, 7-Eleven is the number-one retailer few developer in the country. They're expanding leaps and bounds beyond Racetrack Speedway or any other national franchises. This guy's not going to close. The only other best hope would be 7-Eleven expand on that property, and then it doesn't meet community needs. So, and I would hope, and I didn't see a rendering of this from the applicant, but that architecturally, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing, noise has been addressed, you've addressed traffic. I'll tell you that if I was on council, when the Denny's application came forward, I would be 100% behind staff, because that's US-19 frontage, absolutely. Consolidation, I think, would be encouraged, and we would wait, we would wait it out. But 60 years is long enough to wait. I would not, I would have denied the application for the Denny's. I would not have supported it, because I believe in the plan. This is a really, really unique instance, and so I'm going to be supporting the applicant and voting to deny the text amendment as well.
Mr. Kunda?
You know I'm not a great supporter of storage facilities. I happen to use a storage facility, so I understand them, I like them when they're needed. I know people do need storage facilities. And it looks like, south of Gulf Bay is just booming with new places, and I think there will be a need closer than Duncan and up by Denny's for storage. I like the fact that it is a mixed-use with office and retail in it. I like that it's not demanding a lot of additional parking, which would be traffic. I don't like that we have to go around planning and development on this. And I'm in favor of you maybe revisiting the corridor and making it so that we don't have to go around these corners on these odd pieces of property. And everybody agrees that it is a weird, weird piece of property, and nobody knows what to do with it. Whether it's going to be four or five stories or seven stories, really, it's not going to look much different, because it's landlocked, it's limited by the property. And I say let's make good use of the height that's allowable. Let's get some office space up on the top and retail on the side. And although I almost never vote against you guys, I'm going to this time.
Well, I can count, too. But I'm not going to give in, because I haven't given in on the three other times that this has come forward to us. Counsel, we gave staff a charge, and they spent an awful lot of time working on a US-19 corridor plan. We gave a charge to our Community Development Board to review this, and they came back with a recommendation. I'm not denying that there isn't a need, I'm not denying that this may be the best use, but we have a process. You don't like it, so you counted differently. And that's not right. We have done this now three times. How many other unique parcels are we going to find that are going to come to us? And because it's not convenient to follow the process, they're going to come directly to council. So I'm troubled by this trend that we're seeing in one year's time. And I'm just disappointed that once again, we're having to abandon our process, our Community Development Board, and our staff, to do something that, we're all going to agree that it's needed, but we're saying, you know, guys, you're entitled to something extra. Motion has been made and seconded to deny the amendments to the Clearwater Community Development Code to expand the area. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no.
No.
Motion is denied, is rejected 4 to 1. So, we don't need, we need to read the resolution and deny the resolution?
No, there is an ordinance, and so-
The ordinance?
You are presumably approving this ordinance.
We will pass the ordinance.
So we're going to pass, if you want the storage unit facility to go forward, you will pass the ordinance?
This is the ordinance amends the-
Okay, so a motion to, I need a motion to approve-
I move to pass ordinance.
Well, actually, so you've denied the amendment, while you approved, you denied the staff request to deny it.
Right.
So, I'll just read you the ordinance. Ordinance number 9308-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, making an amendment to the Community Development Code Appendix B, US-19 zoning district and development standard, section B-303, table 2, to expand the geographic area where self-storage warehouse use with required retail, restaurant, and/or office uses is permitted in the regional center sub-district of the US-19 zoning district to include a certain parcel with frontage of Seville Boulevard, subject to FLS approval, certifying consistency with the city's comprehensive plan and proper advertisement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance number 9308-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9308-19 on first reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, counsel? Mr. Hamilton?
The only thing I'd like to say, the comments you made, I agree, but we also, okay, we have a Community Development Board. Their decisions come to us as a recommendation. Going against what they voted is why we're here. If we feel that's what we want, if that's how we feel it should be, if we're not allowed or not supposed to go up against the Community Development Code, should we not just give them the power to approve this and never come to us? That, I mean, the process comes to us, but it doesn't say, because it was, because they make a decision one way, that we are required to follow that recommendation if we feel differently. And very rarely do we feel differently, but this is one of those cases.
I understand, and I appreciate that, you know, Mr. Hamilton. You know, they heard all of this debate, okay? They listened to the staff recommendations. And all I'm saying is that it troubles me that this process that we've set up, the whole process, you know, once again, we're making an exception for, you know, and that's, that was really what I was referencing, that we're making an exception once again.
I appreciate that. But I also would be willing to bet a sizable amount of money that, on the US-19 Plan, that as some things move forward and then get implemented, it's going to present either opportunity or some, an opportunity in somebody's mind for something that might be very good, that might not be exactly what the plan calls for, and we're going to have to address that again. The plan is a great plan, but it's not written so rigidly that we can't have interpretation of it at certain points.
But the applicant did not want to follow the other process that was open to him. And that is what's most troubling, in my opinion.
I appreciate that.
Are we still on topic?
Yeah.
Being rigid and not flexible, I would suggest, might be why there's no cranes in downtown Clearwater. I came back from Fort Myers today. If anybody wants to open up a business, open up a crane business and go to St. Pete, maybe even Dunedin. Okay? We need flexibility, we need exceptions. So without those exceptions, I would also suggest, how successful is that US-19 corridor plan going to be? How long are we going to wait? Maybe this is the development that will inspire the development of the rest of that piece of Seville going in. So I agree, it's great to have plans, but I think in this situation in the city of Clearwater, having plans with exceptions and flexibility to overcome situations, 60 years is ridiculous. But I would suggest that's probably how far we are behind some areas. Granted, with all the assets we have, Clearwater Beach, everything we've got going on, the bluff, from Fort Myers, I saw a lot of communities built out of, today, a scratch of Orange Grove. They don't have the assets and amenities we have, and we haven't figured out how to capitalize on them. And you can't blame two or three partners for our problems. So we better be flexible, we better make exceptions, or we're going to continue to be left out in the side of the coal. Thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? Well, I'm going to close this, because we're not being fair when we're saying that we're being rigid and not flexible. Staff told us that there was a process to be followed that gave flexibility. The applicant chose not to follow that process.
Lesser product does not benefit the economy.
It still was a flexible, so you can't say that cranes in Fort Myers would be in Clear, in St. Petersburg, would be on US-19 if we approve a self-storage unit, again. And that's what we've done, twice now. We've allowed storage units. They don't create jobs.
You don't think it's a amenity to residential? I mean, it's a necessary amenity.
It doesn't create jobs like the plan was intended to create. Motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance 93- Motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance 9308-19 on first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. No. Motion carries four to one with criticism in opposition. Agenda item eight point three.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of industrial limited and initial zoning atlas designation of industrial research and technology, IRT district, for 2108 Palmetto Street, and pass ordinances 9309-19, 9310-19, 9311-19 on first reading. Ms. Clayton.
Good evening, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development Department. The applicant is requesting to annex this property, which has a single-family home on it, but has historically been used for auto repair. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste service and would like to use this property in conjunction with the parcel to the east that they own. The property currently receives water service from the city. The property is contiguous to city boundaries on all four sides, and annexation will actually eliminate an enclave. The property will be designated industrial limited on the future land use map and zoned industrial research and technology. Staff is recommending approval as the annexation will not result in any adverse impacts on city services and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and community development code.
Any questions of staff on agenda item eight point three? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item eight point three?
Move approval of agenda item eight point, oh, there, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Only if we have questions.
Okay. Move approval of agenda item eight point three.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item eight point three. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously missed call.
Ordinance number 9309-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the north side of Palmetto Street, approximately 1,080 feet west of North Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2108 Palmetto Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33765, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9309-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9309-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken.
Ordinance number 9310-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the north side of Palmetto Street, approximately 1,080 feet west of North Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2108 Palmetto Street, Clearwater, Florida, 3 through 765. Upon annexation into the city of Clearwater is industrial limited, IL, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9310-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9310-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously missed call.
Ordinance number 9311-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the north side of Palmetto Street, approximately 1,080 feet west of North Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2108 Palmetto Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33765. Upon annexation to the city of Clearwater's industrial research and technology, IRT, providing an effective date.
I would move to pass ordinance 9311-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9311-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item eight point four. Mr. Horn.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low, RL, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential, LMDR district, for 1421 West Virginia Lane, and pass ordinances 9312-19, 9313-19, and 9314-19 on first reading. Ms. Clayton.
This is another application for annexation for a single-family home in order to receive solid waste service. This property actually already receives water and sewer service from the city. It's located in an enclave, and it's contiguous to city boundaries on the west side, and will be designated residential low on the future land use map and zone low medium-density residential. We're recommending approval as there will be no adverse impacts on city services, and it's consistent with the plan and the code.
Any questions of staff on eight point four? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item eight point four?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of agenda item eight point four.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item eight point four. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken.
Ordinance number 9312-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located generally on the east side of West Virginia Lane, approximately 865 feet south of State Road 590. This post office address is 1421 West Virginia Lane, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9312-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9312-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously missed call.
Ordinance number 9313-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located generally on the east side of West Virginia Lane, approximately 865 feet south of State Road 590. This post office address is 1421 West Virginia Lane, Clearwater, Florida, 33759. Upon annexation to the city of Clearwater's residential low, RL, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9313-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9313-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken.
Ordinance number 9314-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located generally on the east side of West Virginia Lane, approximately 865 feet south of State Road 590. This post office address is 1421 West Virginia Lane, Clearwater, Florida, 33759. Upon annexation into the city of Clearwater is low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
I would move to pass ordinance 9314-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9314-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item eight point five. Mr. Horn.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low, RL, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential, LMDR district, for 1861 East Drive, and pass ordinances 9318-19, 9319-19, and 9320-19 on first reading. Ms. Clayton again.
This is a voluntary annexation request in order to receive sanitary sewer service as well as solid waste. The property currently has water service from the city and has already paid their assessment and impact fees for sewer service. This is another property located in an enclave, is contiguous to city boundaries on three sides, and will be designated residential low and then zone low-medium density residential. Again, no adverse impacts on city services, and we're recommending approval.
Any questions of staff on agenda item eight point five? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item eight point five?
Move approval of agenda item eight point five.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item eight point five. Any comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken. Oh, it's missed call, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 9318-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the east side of East Drive, approximately 223 feet south of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1861 East Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9318-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9318-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Miss call.
Ordinance number 9319-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the east side of East Drive, approximately 223 feet south of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1861 East Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755. Upon annexation to the city of Clearwater's residential low, RL, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9319-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9319-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken.
Ordinance number 9320-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the east side of East Drive, approximately 223 feet south of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1861 East Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755. Upon annexation into the city of Clearwater is low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
I would move to pass ordinance 9320-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9320-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item nine point one is a second reading. Miss call.
Ordinance number 9298-19, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located generally north of Lakeview Road, south of Druid Road, east of South Duncan Avenue, and west of South Hercules Avenue, whose post office address is 1819 Audubon Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, together with a certain portion of Audubon Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said additions, providing an effective date.
Mr. Chairman, I move to pass ordinance 9298-19 on second reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9298-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item, there's not a ten? What happened to ten? Eleven point one.
Support the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot and adopt resolution 19-28. Ms. Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sheridan Boyle, Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Clearwater. So the resolution before you today acknowledges the importance of the newly created Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot and its alignment with the city of Clearwater's goals. The Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot, nominated by the local nonprofit Blue Green Connections, is part of a global mission to draw attention to the precious and unique marine ecosystems around the world. World-renowned marine biologist Dr. Sylvia Earle first introduced the concept of a Hope Spot in 2009 to bring awareness and preservation to the world's marine ecosystems. Many people don't know that Dr. Earle is actually born and raised from Dunedin, so very close to home for us. Hope Spots are recognized areas critical to ocean health and human communities. These areas provide at least one of the following functions: a special abundance or diversity of species, habitats, or ecosystems; particular populations of rare, threatened, or endemic species; a site with potential to reverse damage from negative human impacts; the presence of natural processes such as major migration corridors or spawning grounds; significant historical, cultural, or spiritual values; or a particular economic importance to the community. Hope Spots are not a legal designation or a regulatory entity, and they do not bring about any rules or restrictions to their locations. There is no cost associated with an area hosting a Hope Spot. Instead, they are recognized as special locations by Dr. Earle's organization, Mission Blue, and advocated as sites worthy of scientific research and preservation. Mission Blue announces and promotes its Hope Spots to an extensive network of marine scientists who may conduct studies or hold conferences in the surrounding areas. To its Hope Spots, Mission Blue facilitates funding support, collaboration between potential partners, and assists in increasing local, international, and governmental recognition of the area. Furthermore, a Hope Spot designation promotes an area as an ecotourist destination. The Hope Spot along Florida's Gulf Coast could encourage a greater influx of visitors, be they scientists or tourists, to visit the city. The city would assist, sorry, the Hope Spot would assist the city of Clearwater's strategic direction by increasing the economic opportunity of our area. A Hope Spot would also support the values laid out by the city's comprehensive plan, which prescribes for the preservation of all living and non-living coastal resources. The Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot has found support from the city of Dunedin, the Pinellas County Board of Commissioners, the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Ocean Allies, and more. So with that, I would like to thank you, and I, as well as Ray Bouchard from Blue Green Connections, would be happy to answer any questions regarding the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot or the resolution before you.
Any questions of staff on agenda item eleven point one? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item eleven point one?
I would move approval of agenda item eleven point one.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item eleven point one. Comments, counsel? Mr. Pogles.
Thank you, Mayor. From my time spent in the Tampa Bay Estuary, first of all, I would like to contradict one thing you said, that this designation comes without a cost. There has been a cost to the citizens of the city of Clearwater, not directly with this particular initiative, but with our involvement in Tampa Bay Estuaries. But I would like to also add, that has been one, and to comment and quote some of the things, more seagrasses in the last 50 years. Yes, scallops are some of the hardest. They still haven't figured out why they haven't reintroduced themselves. I know it's very slow. But all the success that's happened in the Tampa Bay Estuary, we have supported, so that, to me, it's kind of like full circle. This has come to where it is now going to be nationally recognized, so that we get twice maybe the bang for our buck and twice the effort with nationally, internationally renowned scientists to come in.
It's also internationally recognized.
To continue and help the effort of what we've already been doing for quite some time and to sort of work on the success that we've been doing. So, thank you. I think this is absolutely a great thing.
Mr. Condo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to piggyback on what my colleague said, because I'm also now on the, the last three years on the Tampa Bay Estuary Board, and I've been amazed at the science that I, that I see there and learn there. And I can only see in, in, in the Gulf Coast Hope Spot, an increased influx of scientists and studies in our area. And I think, I think it'll be a tremendous opportunity that we have that we don't want to miss.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item eleven point one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously mistaken.
Resolution 19-28, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Clearwater supporting the Hope Spot, which is comprised of coastal waters from Apalachicola to 10,000 Islands Wildlife Refuge and providing an effective date.
I move to adopt resolution 19-28.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt resolution 19-28. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item eleven point two. Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Approve an agreement between the city of Clearwater, City, and Redflex Traffic Systems Inc. for a traffic camera safety improvement program through October 30th, 2024, in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D, other government entities bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute such chief's law.
Dan Slaughter, here at Police Chief. In April 2011, the council directed us to implement a red light camera safety program. It went live in summer of 2012, and through an RFP process, we had selected Redflex as the vendor to support the program. We have red light camera enforcement technology deployed at three approaches at two different intersections, one at Chestnut and Fort Harrison, heading eastbound, and then at Belcher and Gulf Bay, at both eastbound approach and westbound approach. The contract with Redflex is set to expire at the end of this month, on October 31st. We're recommending continuing with the, with the contract with Redflex due to our positive experience with them during our last five years. The financials associated with this contract are essentially the same. There are no changes in the flat rate of forty-two, $4,270 per approach per month. The language includes some, or the contract includes some language on cost neutrality, so that if the fines associated with the program do not cover the cost of life of the contract, the city will not be responsible for payments to Redflex. In 2018, the program generated one, or 17,694 notice of violations. This is a violation rate of approximately .09 percent. Okay, so nine one-hundredths of a percent, and that's of, of the 19.4 million vehicles that went through these approaches. Cursor review of the traffic crash data indicates that they are kind of trending downward, but I've always recommended the council be cautious between making a correlation just because of the numerous variables that, to, can, can be accounted for in the crash data. Belcher and 60, and Chestnut, Fort Harrison Belcher and 60 and Chestnut-Fort Harrison were selected by our traffic engineering department based on serious injury crash data. I did follow up based on Councilmember Albritton's question today, and the traffic engineering department is not recommending any changes in the approaches at this time. And we believe that since Belcher and Gulf Bay, it's definitely been an intersection that has been in the top five as far as the number of crashes in the City of Clearwater, that we continue to have a program that promotes safety. We utilize the red light cameras not only for the safety, but we also use it for education. The videos that we see and the violations are concerning when you see them, and there's really no doubt when you see those videos that people actually deserve a citation. I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on agenda item 11.2? Mr. Poglyz.
Thank you, Mayor. To replicate that enforcement tool that those cameras accomplish at the most critical areas that we have in the city, the analysis and manpower, it just could not be done.
If I understand your question, if we were to expand and have additional...
If you were to use manpower and get rid of the cameras...
Oh, if we were to have manpower do it, we wouldn't be able to...
You couldn't do it, the cameras do.
We couldn't do it. You wouldn't have the... You know, you want an effective deterrent in this world, and an effective deterrent is, one of the major components of an effective deterrent is certainty. Red light cameras give you certainty. If you run the red light, you're going to get a citation. And the people, there's even a danger component to what you're talking about. To have a red light camera that sends us through the mail is much safer than an officer having to turn on his lights and sirens to go through an intersection that's already dangerous to go capture a violator. So there's a lot of positives to the camera.
Mr. Condo.
In reading some of the data on this, I know this is, those who get caught going through the red light cameras is only a minute percentage of those who go through the intersections. But it does catch those people who are going through a red light, and I speak from experience on that, too. Can you say that red light cameras save lives?
You know, I can say I don't believe they make any more danger. I can't say that a red light camera citation is going to change the world anything more than doing a speeding citation, and I still have fatalities. So enforcement's important. If it's the one person that learns his lesson with the running the red light, and he gets his ticket, and he doesn't run another red light and cause a crash, then the answer to that's yes. But having that correlation of what could have happened, in crime, we're always, it's always difficult to articulate prevention may accomplish anything because it didn't happen. So, I mean, how do you articulate that? But I would say that all the people accountable for violating the law is a step in the right direction.
And I know there are other steps, and this is for another discussion, but there are additional things perhaps the city could do to help slow down the drivers, to help make the drivers more alert, paying attention, and the red light cameras really don't do this, except, you know, if they understand that there's somebody going through this. So my question is, would you be open to us exploring, or you exploring with us at another time, additional things that could help to keep, make our streets more safe?
I would be certainly open to exploring anything that would make our streets more safe and probably look at it more in the aggregate. We would want to add more tools as opposed to take one away and replace it. But, you know, I think the discussion's always valuable.
Thank you.
Mr. Albritton.
Do you have any figures on, let's say, somebody goes through the intersection but gets through there before the light turns red, but they do get a picture, and they have to, they got a notice. Are there just, I guess, are there any percentage of notices that get sent out that people fight and say, hey, I made it before the...
I don't have necessarily any data on how many are contested that are successfully contested. I would say that that percentage that are successfully contested is going to be extremely small.
Yeah.
But the mechanisms for how the process works is so, it's really difficult for you to get a citation and not a committed, because not only do you get the video and the pictures, then it's reviewed by a person to make sure that they did, that all the vectors are there.
Right.
So there really isn't a scenario that they don't weed, they weed out any ones that would be inaccurate, or that, say, the system got duped or something.
That was kind of my question. And I did, I do know that DOT's looking at that intersection to do something with it. Now, this is through 2024. I don't think anything's going to happen before then, but I think they will have plans, because I've heard of some plans for doing a different layout for that intersection to really help, because that is one of our problematic intersections. I wish it was more like Keene. It's just a very dangerous intersection. So if we did find something that was going to happen before 2024, is there any kind of penalty on if we don't use this?
There's a 90-day cancellation clause in the contract that you could...
Exvoke.
I mean, you could let it run through the remainder of the contract, and if that intersection makes it safer and red lights are less, then...
Okay, all right.
Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 11.2? Again, we ask that you have a card filled out, and you give us your name.
Mark Bunker. And I think red light cameras are evil, should be taken down, dismantled, and smelted. I don't know that they really cause people to drive any more safely. I see people in Florida drive crazier than anywhere I've been in the country, and that includes LA. Even at Gulf Bay and Belcher, people are flying through that intersection. I see the cameras flashing constantly. Just seems to me more of a cash cow for the city, and can cause more accidents than prevent. I urge citizens to please drive more carefully. Thank you.
Councilman, my name is Axel David. I'm here in my personal capacity as a Clearwater resident to talk to you about this red light camera program, something I've been looking into quite a bit for a number of years. You know, a lot of arguments which you hear, you get the emails, you get the phone calls, you hear people speak, the arguments that get sent, constitutional due process, you can't face an accuser, it's a machine on the side of the road. There's a lot of privacy issues, these license plate data is being stored on private servers somewhere in Arizona or Australia, wherever it's located. And of course, the overall negative, people hate these things. And I think anyone in this room would agree that it's overwhelmingly despised. Maybe not everyone in this room agrees with that, but it's pretty well understood that people do not like these things. To address the effectiveness of this program, I need to address two questions. One, is red light running being reduced? And two, are the intersections safer? To look at the crash rates, I'll put it on this screen over here. This is from Pinellas County.
Sorry.
Okay. That's from Pinellas County. This red arrow where you see, that's when the city started the photo enforcement program. That's in 2012. And 2013 was the first full year the cameras were in operation. You see the spike in accidents there. Chief Slatter, an email that was sent to you on October 10th, started the data conveniently at 2015. He did go all the way back to the beginning of the program, or even before that, which if you want to look at the effectiveness of the program, you had to go before, not just arbitrary number, the middle of 2015. You see at 2015 and 2017, the accidents peaked at the other page, similar results at the Chestnut and Fort Harrison. At the work session on March 5th, 2013, then Major Slatter said, quote, "It's difficult to correlate red light camera enforcement based on increase or reduction in crash activity." That was March of 2013. Yesterday, on Monday's work session in this chambers here, he had functioned the same argument. Today, before he spoke, again, functioned the same argument. Well, you can't really, there's some correlations, some variables here, you just don't understand. I don't buy that. I look at the crash data, this is right here, but I don't want to split hairs here, okay? Let's not look at the crash data, let's not look at any of this stuff here. Let's look at how many violations are there, which you got in the same email sent by Chief Slatter on October 10th. This is directly from Redflex, this is a document I created, this is from Redflex. It tells you year by year how many violations were issued. I will caution this, 2017, I believe it was Gulf Bay and Belcher had the cameras offline there for construction. You see, in the first full year of operation in 2013, there were 8,275 violations printed. That number rose dramatically to 17,691 violations, which she alluded to earlier. That is more than double. How could you tell me that a program started in 2013 that caused red light running to double and crashes to go up is in any way an effective deterrent or successful? I would challenge that very vociferous, I should say. I would recommend, time's up, I hope you don't extend this. Thank you.
Make sure you fill out a card, sir, if you haven't already. Anybody else from the public to speak to agenda item 11.2?
Good evening, Gary Lee, Clearwater. I would say, if you don't do anything wrong...
No.
If you don't do anything wrong, you don't have anything to fear. I am in favor of the red lights. Reminds you of the old joke where the guy went through the light, the camera snapped, and he said, "I was not speeding." Goes through the light again, third time, he says, "I can hardly wait till I get my ticket, because I'm going to contest this." He got a citation, he wasn't wearing a seatbelt. So I think those are a good idea, and you'll ask for other ideas that might help people drive more safely. Now, I noticed that when we have stop signs, people roll through them so many different times. And so my suggestion would be, if you're going to try to curb that, why not put a traffic bump by the stop sign? People will be annoyed, but chances are, they would stop. And if we want a safer environment, then they're going to put three traffic or speed bumps on our street, they said before the end of October. They said, "I will probably be very upset when it's done, but I probably won't speed." So I think these measures are good. Yeah, there might be an intrusion of a little bit of privacy, but if you haven't done anything wrong, then you don't have to worry about it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to 11.2?
I have a quick question.
No, you have to come forward, fill out a card, so that we'll have your name, and we'll let you speak for three minutes.
My name's Braden. I've never really done this before. I really just wanted to ask a question, you know, what kind of revenue we were seeing come in for these lights? So, bottom line, if we're making money off it, we're going to continue to do it. But the red lights, what they do is it stifles the flow of traffic. And when you cause breaks in a system, what happens is it creates more danger. So red lights, in general, you know, yeah, you might make more money, but you're creating, you're making it hazardous, is the bottom line, because, I don't know, man, I just wanted to ask the damn question.
Please fill out a card. Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to 11.2? If not, I will close public comment. Motion's been made and seconded. No motion yet.
I will make a motion to approve agenda item 11.2.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve agenda item 11.2. Comments, council? Mr. Albritton.
You know, I don't like red light, or these cameras either, because I think they're distracting. I mentioned in Monday that I come over Chestnut and I make a right turn on Fort Harrison early in the morning, it's dark. And I see a lot of times, even when I come to a stop, that light goes off, and I'm like, I see it, but I, it takes me a minute to figure what it is. It's not that I'm doing anything, I'm not going through the intersection, but that's why I was asking you how many times that you have people that fight it, that come back. But here's the thing, I think it really does deter. When I see the numbers, and I know they're right, 19.4 million cars that go on, you know, that go through those intersections, and only .09% of the ones, people that run the red lights. You know what? If I was running them and I had to pay a fine, next time I come to that intersection, I would think twice. So I know I would be deterred about it. So even though I don't like them, I think it's, I'm going to vote that, you know, to put them in, keep them in.
Mr. Poglyz.
Sorry, Hoey, I keep pointing to you, but the mayor cut my fingers. No, it's okay. I'm going to go. So I personally like them. I don't think they're going to, I mean, we are a tourist-based economy here. Those two are most, so it happens to be, critical intersections are the two that engage the most tourists coming in and leaving. Is it going to educate them? Well, maybe on their seven-day stay, they might remember that they either got a ticket or they didn't. But to me, I think it is an education enforcement tool for our residents, because many of our residents, if they don't know the shortcuts, or by virtue of that's the road they have to take. My daughter ran the red light at Gulf Bay and Belcher, and she complained and whined, it was too much, she doesn't make that much money. I said, "Well, sweetie, you're not going to do that again, are you? Or you're going to avoid that?" So it's an educational tool for our residents. If we can make it safer, the chief said, "We cannot enforce to the degree that these cameras do." And we're only doing it at two intersections. There are communities that have rejected it all out, but then there are communities that use it even more than we do. So I like the program in our city for those two, and that's why I'm going to be supporting it.
Mr. Hamilton.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's been in use for, since 2012, so seven years now. Is it a total deterrent? Absolutely not. That's why people still get tickets for running it. I don't, I don't buy into in any way, shape, or form that it's a cash cow revenue generator, although it does generate revenues. But guess what? So as the chief has said to me before, every traffic ticket, his police force writes is revenue. But they're written because someone violated a law of driving. So it's about catching the violators, it's not about revenue generating. If this was strictly revenue generation, we'd be saying, why aren't we just putting it at two intersections? Why don't we have it at 20 intersections? If we wanted a, this is a cash cow revenue generator. I think it's reasonable to keep what the contract we have on the two intersections that we're doing. I drive through the Belcher-Gulf Bay intersection daily multiple times, and I know the cameras are there. And it's, I'm much more cautious going through that intersection than I am some others in this city. The chief gives me a hard time about some of my driving habits sometimes. But it's a, it's been in place, it's in place, I see no reason not to continue it for this. Now, if a government body higher than us at the state level, or whatever, says that they're not allowed in the state, we'll take it out. But, you know, I'm willing to vote, and I will vote to extend this contract.
Mr. Condo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes as a recommendation from the police, and I'm inclined to agree with it and keep it in. I'm also looking for any other, many other ways to help slow us down. We are a society that just likes to speed and speed and rolling what we used to call California stops. And it is so dangerous, and I've seen some of the videos of people getting killed at Gulf Bay and Belcher. And this is one small tool, and I think we ought to find other tools in order to save lives and use them, so I'm going to vote in favor of it. So I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Council, the last couple of times this came before us, I voted against it. I am still not a fan of red light cameras. But I saw an article in Governing Magazine of September 2019, last month, and it said that cities that took out red light cameras had higher fatality rates at those intersections once the cameras were taken out. And so, chief, you have a unanimous vote, if I'm counting correctly. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 11.2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Anken.
There is no order.
No, there's a, oh, no. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 11.3. I apologize. 11.3.
Accept an underground communication easement containing two easement areas, a 34-foot easement and a 50-foot easement from Duke Energy Florida LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of an underground communication facilities on real property located in Duke Energy Right-Away west of Spectrum Field and adopt Resolution 19-31. Mr. Verzak.
Good evening. Robert Verzak, Real Estate Coordinator. The proposed easement will provide the city with property rights necessary for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city fiber lines within the easement that will support the new transfer station and Phillies Carpenter complex at Spectrum Field. Questions?
Any questions of staff on 11.3? Anybody from the public to speak to 11.3?
Motion to approve for 11.3.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 11.3. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Anken.
Resolution Number 19-31, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, accepting an underground communications easement from Duke Energy Florida LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city communications facilities, providing an effective date.
I would move to adopt Resolution 19-31.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Resolution 19-31. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 11.4.
Approve the First Amendment to that certain contract for sale of real property by the City of Clearwater, Florida between the City of Clearwater and Equity Lifestyle Properties, Inc., and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Verzak, again.
The City and Lifestyle Properties entered in a contract for sale of the city's Hillsborough County Keystone property on November 20, 2018. For the purposes of clarification, the parties wish to amend Section 20 of the agreement to reflect that the inspection period as defined in the contract has passed with no such pre-existing conditions being identified. The remainder of the provisions as written shall remain intact.
Any questions on 11.4? Anybody from the public to speak to 11.4?
Move approval of Agenda Item 11.4.
I'll second it if it'll get this thing done. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 11.4. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 11.5.
Authorize the recording of a lien for a total cost of $27,444.24 on the property located at 401 North Garden Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, which has a legal description of the west one half of Lot 11, Block 2, part's addition to Clearwater, according to the map or plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 194, page 94 of the public records of Hillsborough County, Florida, of which Pinellas County was formerly a park and whose owner is JPAC LLC and adopt Resolution 19-07. Ms. Clayton.
Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. This agenda item is requesting your authorization to place a lien on the property at 401 North Garden Avenue in an amount equal to the cost that our department has spent on the demolition of an unstrated safe structure that used to occupy this site. We have the answer. Any questions?
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 11.5? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 11.5?
I would move to approve Agenda Item 11.5.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 11.5. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Anken.
Resolution Number 19-07, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, assessing certain real property having a post office address of 401 North Garden Avenue. Clearwater, Florida is described more particularly herein in the amount of $27,444.24 for the cost of demolition and other expenses incurred in removing a dangerous structure without consent of owner, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt Resolution 19-07.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Resolution 19-07. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 11.6.
Redefine and confirm submersed land lease between the State of Florida and the City of Clearwater for the shared docking facility adjacent to the Beach Recreation Center and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Ed Chesney, Marine and Aviation. This is the lease for the docks behind the Beach Rec Center. The first 15 of those docks are day slips available to the public, free of charge. The remainder of the slips are controlled, will be controlled by the San Pro Resort, and they're responsible for all maintenance and upkeep on them.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 11.6? Mr. Pogly.
One. Since they relatively just recently have been renovated and rebuilt in a very good shape, does that maintenance include if there's a need to rebuild or repair due to storm or otherwise, are they partners within that process as well?
Yes. Anything, we had a piling, somebody ran into a piling on the free day docks and broke that, and we reported it, and they repaired it and fixed it.
Right. Thanks.
Any other questions, council? Anybody from the public to speak to 11.6? Motion?
Motion to approve, 11.6.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 11.6. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Anken, do you have any, or Mr. Hoard, do you have anything further?
Mayor, I have just that, if you will, will indulge me just to make a couple of comments as related to your conversation about the storage units. The use of the term flexibility, I was concerned about how the public might have perceived some of those comments related to the use of that term. And I just wanted to point out that our staff knows what flexibility is, and we use it within the code as written, within the plans that are written. What we don't do professionally is make exceptions. The exceptions that are made is in your purview. You're the ones, through your legislative action, decide how much you want to deviate from what's in the code. But you will never have our staff professional, at least our staff who really sees themselves as professional, they're not gonna make exceptions. I don't make exceptions if I don't have the authority to do so. So, I just wanted to kind of make it clear for those who are listening to understand where that flexibility is being applied. It's being applied by the council through your legislative action because you have the authority to determine if the rules are gonna be followed or not. But we don't professionally. You expect us to follow the rules. That's all I wanted to share.
Ms. Anken, do you have anything further for us?
No, sir.
Closing comments. Mr. Condon.
City manager, I would then suggest, I probably used the wrong word with exceptions. Flexibility is a process to get where certain applicants need to be, and they followed the process and was sort of given a lot of pushback, and they followed the process to do that. So, that process with text amendment is the path to flexibility. Or you might say an exception, but they followed the process to get that way. The other final comments I would like to make are, I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Shada had said about private sector involvement. And I can remember back before I was on council and then while I was on council, yes, they've not been successful in bringing multimillion-dollar developers downtown, recruiting them, nor have we. But I will suggest that they were part of the process, and they partnered with the city to a large degree. And the first example I'll give you is the Nolan. I was on the partnership when the Nolan was being considered, ultimately ended up on the council. It is a great project for downtown, and that project had a lot of private conversation with individual partners in downtown. The second project was the Apex 1100. And yes, the city initiated it by fines with the current, the then-owner to really generate some interest, and finally, we got to where we needed to be. But I will tell you, the private sector, while these negotiations were going on with Mr. Deb, the private sector met with him multiple times and gave him a really good overview of all of the initiatives and everything we were trying to do in Clearwater to, I think, give him a higher level of comfort for the amount of investment that he did. And then finally, the ring. That is private citizen investment money. Yes, the taxpayers, the citizens participated in that endeavor, but they have stepped forward. So, there is private sector involvement, ambition, and they'll always be there to help, and I think we need to continually be good partners with them and they with us. So, thank you.
Mr. Condon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wear a couple of volunteer hats, and one is with the Sons of the American Revolution. We had a luncheon today and honored two law enforcement individuals, one from the Florida Highway Patrol and a trooper, Cole, who works here in the county. And I reminded him that the first ticket that I got in Florida, when I moved here 23 years ago, was from the Florida Highway Patrol Motorcycle Trooper who saw the light more red than yellow. And I said, but I learned, he said, "No doubt it was Officer, Trooper Lopez." They have a name for whoever gives those tickets out. But I learned a lesson, and the lesson is that if you get a ticket, you go to driver training school, and you get a discount for three years on your auto insurance. And that was a valuable lesson to me, plus I started slowing down rather than speeding up at yellow lights, which helps me live a little bit longer. The second officer that was honored today was from the Clearwater Police Department, and many of you know Officer James Frederick, and he's a wonderful officer and works, I asked him, what is, well, I said, "Your favorite part of your job is reading books to children, isn't it?" And he said, "Well, I really enjoy that, but I do come away wondering what diseases I picked up, you know, what insects and things from little kids who may not be quite as, learned all the facilities of sanitation that we adults have." I hope you have. But he loves doing that, and he really is a wonderful officer. I've been in many, many neighborhood meetings where he's in there and works out of some of the rec centers, and certainly deserving of commendation from the Clearwater chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. Was happy to be there today.
Mr. Albrecht.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna just say something about Nagano, Japan. I'm not gonna steal any thunder if you had something to say about it, but I just wanted to let everybody know, I was, we were all looking really forward to a trip representing Clearwater to our sister city, Nagano, Japan, this weekend. And the last few days, a very severe typhoon hit Japan, and Nagano was very damaged. We didn't see anything in our papers here about it. National News did cover it, and I saw really some photos and videos, almost like us getting hit with a direct hit on a hurricane here. So, we are not going, but I just wanted to give them my, you know, heartfelt, I just hope that they come out of this well, and we wish them the best from the City of Clearwater.
Mr. Hamilton.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Albrecht, Councilman Rob Albrecht said about Nagano. He was, we were joking, you know, maybe we should show up and still go on the trip, but just take our blue jeans and our work boots and go over there and try to help them recover because it truly, I mean, they were truly devastated by this. Their typhoon, my understanding is if it correlated to a hurricane hitting us, it would be somewhere between a Cat 4 and a Cat 5. So they took a huge hit from this typhoon. And it's gonna take a little while for them to recover. And we, and I personally, and I know everyone sitting here extends our thoughts, prayers, and hopes for their full recovery in as quick fashion as possible. Other than that, just wanna wish everybody, you know, be safe this weekend, enjoy the Jazz Holiday, it's one of the biggest events of every year for us. Enjoy that. And weekend after this, Stone Crab Festival out on the beach. My understanding is the stone crab harvest this year so far looks a lot better than last year because this year we're not dealing with any red tide. So, get out and enjoy those stone crabs next, weekend after this.
To just follow up on my colleagues, for those of you who don't know, Nagano, Japan is in the Japanese Alps. It's not even on the coastline, and yet they had tremendous flooding from like 39 inches of rain in a very short time, and the rivers overflowed. And for those of you who may be familiar with the bullet trains, the water was so high that it even flooded the bullet trains in Japan and left them unserviceable, and they haven't been running. So, as is indicated, our thoughts and prayers go out to all of those people, not only in Nagano, but throughout Japan. The Clearwater Jazz Holiday begins tomorrow, Thursday, October 17, and runs through Sunday, October 20. So we encourage people to come out and attend the Jazz Holiday. On the 18th, it starts the Clearwater Beach Chalk Art Festival and also the third Fridays at the Long Center. On Saturday, the 19th, we are going to have our Building Better Neighborhoods Through Sustainability Conference at the Ross Norton Center, beginning at 9:00 in the morning. Also, as was indicated, on the 25th is the Frenchie Stone Crab Weekend, the 25th, 26th, and 27th, and I'm sure some of the other restaurants will be participating. On Saturday, the 26th, is the Phil Doganero Three Bridges Race. Proceeds from that event goes to the Clearwater for Youth Program. Also, on the 26th is the Community Family Fun Night at the Walter Campbell Buccaneers Field in North Greenwood. On Halloween, the 31st, the Phillies and the Threshers have their annual Boo Bash at Spectrum Field. This is your opportunity to bring your children to a family fun Halloween evening of trick-or-treating. They're even gonna have hay rides and a costume contest and lots of candy for everybody. Want to congratulate the Clearwater Tornados who defeated the Countryside Cougars in the Clearwater Centennial Cup Football Game last Friday by the score of 23 to 21. We've invited the football team to join us at one of our meetings coming forward. Want to, again, congratulate our two chambers, the Clearwater Beach Chamber and the Clearwater Regional Chamber, for unifying under the Amplify Clearwater logo and name with the "One Chamber, One Community, One Vision" as their goal. Want to remind our residents that on November 2nd, a Saturday, the Morningside Rec Center will be the site of an Operation Shred Program. Want to thank our employees who volunteered their time to participate in the United Way Day of Caring. And also on Saturday, we had an event council at the Clearwater Sailing Center that was called the Never Say Never Pirate Camp. And we had children from across the country came to Clearwater. These kids are limb disabled. Many of them don't have any arms, don't have any feet, don't have any legs, and through this pirate camp, they get to learn how to sail, they get limbs if they need them, and it was really moving to see them having a good time with their families. I know based our restaurants, the Sheridan, San Key, and other community partners... I know based our restaurants, the Sheridan Sand Key, and other community partners helped provide this no-cost weekend to the families. So, again, this is the seventh year that this camp has been here in Clearwater, and one of our Paralympians, Brad Kendall, helps coordinate that. So, it's one of those things that, you know, we, we were said earlier about people volunteering. People volunteer throughout the community all the time, and it's unfortunate that we don't recognize that sometimes, but we are deeply grateful for those hours that they give back to our community. And that's what makes Clearwater, and really every community, so very special. Thank you for spending part of your evening with us tonight. Our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, November the 7th. We urge you.